...rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, the district mission state in partnership with the communities, the mission of the Dilworth-Linden School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed and responsible lifelong learners. Roll call, we've got everyone here on the board along with Mr. Hunstead, Shannon Noack, and I think it's here as well. We have guests, but there's... Number four, this is to adopt the agenda, changes to the agenda?
Nope, no changes.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, do I have a second? Second, bye.
Cool.
Any questions or comments? All those, please, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Number five, public comments and rebel recognition. If we have any public comments today, so any rebel recognition?
Congratulations to the volleyball team that is moving on. They play Friday night, no, tomorrow night. Tomorrow night, sorry, at six o'clock, sorry. And Morehead at six, and then we have the football team plays in the Fargo Dome on Friday night at eight, so that'll be late for the section championship for the football team. If the girls win tomorrow, they play Saturday for the section championship, I believe, so kudos to them.
And Owen Winter is going to state.
And Owen Winter is going to state. He got second place, right?
Second place.
Second place, he's going to state, so congratulations to him, so those are kind of big deals, for sure.
I think that Mr. Ewers government class who helped the forum last week did a great job. I think it was a good experience for the kids and our grabbing for all of us.
Troy, Troy said it was just awesome.
But I think they did a nice job and it was organized well, so good for them.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, a huge shout out to all the people who came. I was really impressed by the numbers and also the number of views I've heard like, hey, check out the forum and, you know, on Facebook and stuff, people were just, you know, watching, so that's great that they're trying to make informed decisions.
Awesome, no, that was good.
You mean, I were very thrilled we were up there. We're not home, no. No, it was great. The kids did a really nice job and I'm glad that we talked about it. Because Mr. Markort did such a good job with it. It's just, it's a good experience for the kids to see what a public, a civil, public forum looks like.
They did not have to mute a single mic.
I know.
One real that wanted to share, so.
You were muted as soon as you.
Nobody had to swipe the mic. I mean, we were talking at personnel about civics and it was just a good display of civics, so I appreciated that. Everybody did a great job, so our school district's lucky there's five grade candidates and the voters will decide.
Have we met since conferences?
Have we met since conferences?
Well, shout out to all the teachers for holding conferences. When I walked in with my kids, it was like hallways were busy, teachers were talking, so it gets to be long days, I know that, but appreciate it and it's good for to have people in our building, so.
Yep, I agree.
And we have a faint answer tonight.
Tonight.
Answer tonight, yep, so it's seven, so that's why we're early today, so. All right, let's go on to six point one, transportation report.
Okay, we started twenty-three, twenty-four with thirteen bus rides, same as last year. We travel two thousand forty-eight miles a day, three hundred and sixty pounds of oil and forty-eight gallons of beer. That's a free. The longest ride is bus three, they got a hundred and thirty-nine miles. Shortest bus ride is forty, or bus eight with forty-eight miles. Morning, we really don't count the kids because there's more that would be brought in by parents, but in the afternoon, there's nine hundred and twenty-five kids assigned to a bus. That doesn't mean they all run at one time, but there's nine hundred and twenty-five on the list. We run eight shuttle buses back and forth between Dilworth and Glendon. Morning shuttle is always less due to we have parents transporting. Afternoon shuttles are kind of at the max. The last headcount I had was four hundred and twenty-six kids. That's put two to the seat with three key forward, which is a pretty tight-knit household students. So we might have to be heading to the bus. The only problem is when we do that, it does take one of our extra curriculum buses through the rotation, which makes it a little issue too. Dilworth outranks, we run three buses back and forth. That is going great. They have some extra roof extension there, so that's good. Sped vans are pretty much supposed to be maxed out too. We transport forty-five kids here. Joking about where we have to buy one more, I don't know where we actually would. We have one driver that makes three trips in one day just to get the kids to school and back again. And the scary part is when the holidays come, we see a lot of homeless families coming through, which really increases our numbers again. So that's probably what we're ready to see in November, December. Sure, it's going to be an issue. Sped vehicles travel about three hundred and sixty-four miles a day. They put over sixty-four thousand miles on a year too. We started up late, we felt an activity bus, we transfer two or three kids back and forth. Parents fill every test form, email to us, we make sure we have a driver, one of our sped drivers rotating, taking turns bringing them back and forth, so that's been going well. We went through our annual bus inspection. We have some new inspectors, so it was a little different this year, different inspectors, different expectations. Some were a little tougher. We did have two buses that didn't fail. We had two school vehicles that failed. Both buses have now been approved. We're just waiting for them to come back and do the school vehicles, so they should be good to go. We're going to start our annual, annual bus ride alongs. This is my opportunity to see how the bus service, yeah, the bus, basically, if they're following the right path. Looking for any hazards, any bus stops that we should be concerned about, validate their exit skills, if we're making the place up, we can't make that. Anything that would be frightful to see, we kind of dress right away. The, that new activity bus we've had for a couple of years has done really well and is running two to three trips in a day or a week easily. One thing nice, I found those fifteen people, some of the, some of them are a little bit bigger, like we have a type three driver we took Andrew and he had the on of the cross country through the whole season, which makes a huge difference because that puts another active bus back into the ring where you have larger groups, so kudos to Andrew for his dedication and helping us. It's nice that we have type three drivers that can do that. Right now, we have three full-time drivers, full house, two part-time drivers, so we're doing really good. One of our bus drivers actually, one of our sped drivers actually has ECL, which has really helped too. We have been able to take that and drop them into a private bus and then we bring in one of our special enders, our subdrivers, so it gives us an extra bus when we need it. One thing, kudos to the transportation department, our contractors, our bus drivers, our sped drivers, they will do anything it takes to make the work. They don't, they come back and work. I have never seen some shady. Now, people that come to school with everything, it doesn't matter what you ask them, they're going to be able to drive, sure. I mean, just whatever you ask, they pretty much do. We are very, very fortunate for that. We did boost three bus drivers this year to health issues. We were able to replace one. We did bring more extra drivers and boys, we do have one. We're still sitting with nineteen bus drivers. We have six subs if we need them, so we're still sitting pretty decent. Currently, we transport three kids to Lake AC Education, if I don't get it, in Holly. There will be fourth one coming in November first, I think there's a fourth one coming. I think there's one more in the works to it.
Send every day.
Every day, three trips a day from there. We haul seventeen kids from the ALP out here in the afternoon so that they get home. There's no way we can get home, we all out of here. And the only major concern I've really seen right now in the transportation department is the growing number of stop arms we see. It's almost scary. I mean, every day, I would say within a week, good, at least two to three, sometimes two in one day in the same location. We have really bad stuff on Highway seventy-five, Ed Birds, something with the T C D, we get some kind of flashers out there and something. Because last week, we literally, wait, I went, we literally had somebody pass a pickup, pass bus driver, as you know, a load of kids on the right hand side of the road. I've only seen that one other time in the fifteen years I've been here. I mean, it's scary, so they are looking into, yeah, the B trucks that are running right now, all the extra drivers on the road, all the distractions that go on. That is probably one of the things that's the scariest to see that's going on in the transportation department. And we do have great cameras, they do catch a lot. The only problem is if it happens morning and it's not real light out here, the situation's going to be going worse now. There's no camera plates as part of the problem, or the cash on the right side, there's no cameras on the right side, no plates also. Transportation wise, it's going on pretty decent. Any questions?
I'll just say, so Eileen and I had a conversation, and I don't know, time flies when you're having fun, but maybe two weeks ago. Just so you know, with the B trucks and everything, and Trent Systems is obviously out and about. Trent Systems, I was really impressed at how they handled a situation that Eileen encountered. They really came in and stepped up, in my opinion, and I was just, it was nice to hear that. They weren't fighting it, they weren't doing, they just, they took care of it. And kind of, no bones, they took care of it. So I was just really impressed because what happened was absolutely ridiculous. It's to the stop arm thing, it just blows me away when I talk with Eileen, how many people violate that. It's just crazy. It's just insane. So thank you for what you do and it's constantly turning a hand, and Clay County for stepping up and helping and supporting us when our bus drivers are encountering that situation. It's just, it's hard to believe, I've been trying to say that.
The best stop happened like at roughly the same time, I'm assuming, right?
Almost like a.
But you said that one, that one area is extra bad and you're working with D O T, but it like, that bus stop has like a timeframe for it?
We have three in the afternoon and then I can't remember when he said thirteen or something like that. And the sad part is, it's not just us. I was talking to, we, this is kind of a, Richard's, because it was a Richard's bus in the other sense, and wanted to do a camera on that bus. But then I said I was actually driving, he said I was so, I just was so leveraged that it was actually happening, and he said, the plates are so dirty, I couldn't read it.
Sure.
So I mean, it's, it's not, and he said, two, he had, two years ago, he had a really bad incident at the same location, and he also was putting a call into the state. And then more getting public, so that too, they would go to the state to see if he had some kind of flashing lights out there, or it's a heavy travel road, it's why he's going to move. I mean, the transit trucks coming in there, and you have all the B trucks, it's just, and then you get, just the general public are, you know, they slow down and then they just leave. I'm like, this stuff doesn't mean stuff like this, I don't know.
Eight-way lights, I, what you can't slow down is being, if you can't see eight-way lights, you, you need, there's other things going on.
Well, I've had those conversations with multiple people over the years, and some of them are just completely blissfully unaware in some other land as far as what the rules and laws are. Many of them are younger people, but not, not all of them, not most of them, so I... Well, you know that we do take extra patrol requests and things, so like if you haven't reached out to the sheriff's office or something, you can send me an email with concerning date, time, and location. No guarantees, but as we have available deputies, they're happy to focus on some of those problem issues.
We had another one, I had a deputy in there too, who was right, got those going through. He just said, we can see, it's an extra original. It's just a bad area. It's always been. It's just that any traffic, obviously, stop, it's not, it's not, I'm not sure what it means.
Yeah, not a, not a question again, but I just also want to, just as you hear Eileen's report and her team, this, I mean, it's just running super smooth this year. Your people are positive, they are supportive. I just, again, thank you for all of that coordinating, because those people trust you, and it's just, it's just... It's like when I say I don't hear anything, that's amazing. And so when I, I mean it, and it's, it's just been really smooth, and it is nice to hear. When I popped in there this afternoon, they're just happy, hey, how can I help? They're just a great group of people that want to help, and I think it's, kudos to you, so thank you.
Great group of people, it's like, it doesn't matter, bus drivers, whatever, they all work together, it's a nice deal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
All right, we'll go on to six point two, this is the service report.
Good evening, everybody. Every time I serve this, I think, oh, what am I going to talk about? First, I want to say hats off to the Lebanon Nutrition Service staff that made wonderful things happen every day and every occasion. So as we go through, you'll, you'll see all the different things that they may happen. So right off the bat, we'll start with our free and reduced data, our online applications. We gained one percent, so we have percent used it last year, eighty-six percent this year, so it's, it's rolling a little bit, but most of ours come from direct cert. When you think of the district meal benefit, benefits, free or reduced, meal benefits is what the state calls it. Last year this time, we started at twenty-seven percent. We ended last year at twenty-six point nine-six percent, and currently we're at twenty-nine point two-eight percent. Most districts are seeing a ten trend of decreasing. We're kind of maintaining and increased a little bit. At first, I thought it was due to our preschool numbers, but when I looked at the data, it's actually our middle school, so I don't know if we had some more enrollments there or what all that is. But we're maintaining at our twenty-nine percent right now. Last summer, we did summer feeding again for the second year. Compared to the year before, our breakfast was down a little bit, but our lunch was up. Thank you to the staff, Christina, Truda, Angela, and Lene. We broke it up this year, and I asked, you know, who wants to do June, who wants to do July, and who wants to do August? And we had them all filled, so that worked out very nice. Everybody still got a break in there, but then they got to come in and get their feet wet and get back into the groove of things. Lene is our district vote, so she just kind of hops in and out when we need her, and she filled in when the summer was needed too. Farm to school, and we were awarded, so here's kind of what happens, is the words go out, some districts think we can't utilize all of these funds, we're going to give them back to the state. The state comes in and says, who could use more funds? I put it in, and we did get an additional five thousand dollars towards that. We have submitted our 2024 application, so we'll find out in January if that's going to be approved. When we think of farm to school, everybody kind of defines it a little different. Minnesota calls it the whole state of Minnesota. The district's saying within two hundred miles of their district. What I have done is I've defined it as fifty-mile radius within our Glendon site, so then we cross over a little bit into Fargo, but we keep it mainly over here. I went back and I looked, and in the twenty months we have been doing this through September, we have spent one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars back into a fifty-mile radius of our school district, purchasing farm to school. September, I had some, Tracy was wonderful and sent some social media stuff up. It was kind of fun last week at a director's meeting, and we talked about farm to school. And a lot of districts were like, September's so busy, that's the big time it comes in, so we don't do a whole lot, and I said, no, we were boots on the ground running. We took what we could, we utilized what we could, our fruits and vegetables. We used four thousand six hundred and twenty-one pounds plus two thousand five hundred and ninety years of corn. And then we also do the homemade that we purchased from Evergreen Bakery, so we did four hundred and twenty-two cinnamon rolls, forty-two loaves of sandwich bread, two thousand four hundred cookies, a hundred and twenty-three loaves of banana bread, and a hundred and forty-eight loaves of pumpkin bread. Evergreen Bakery is also going to be doing our fried bread for our fried bread tacos coming up next month, so that'd be made from scratch also. M D E reviews, July, we had our summer feeding review, in January, we have our breakfast and lunch program review, and recruitment review. So it's kind of a big year with M D E really looking through everything and making sure we are all in line. School pay issues at the beginning of the year, there was an issue, it was pulling transactions, but it was not updating the balance. I worked with John in I T, and we got that resolved, and then I had a couple red flags come up about automatic payments. So I went back to them. I don't get really far with them, but John takes great strides, so he is working with them currently to try and get that discrepancy handled. He's, he's fantastic about that, so. New initiatives, we had the smart snack vending machines that started this year. They've been really popular with the kiddos. And then I have also worked with Mr. Lepard, and we are doing cultural meals once a month that is planned along with some curriculum. So I listed on there the different things that we're doing, Hispanic, Italian, Native American, German, British. So we just kind of went through and came up with some fun recipes for the kids. We're also going to do our special meal coming up November fourteenth, Beizen burgers and roasted delicata squash. Till twenty-six, we'll have a Thanksgiving dinner, and the nineteenth, we'll also have a Christmas dinner. I've already secured, we have Lhasa coming in, so it's just a very good, just a good meal, you know, send kids off with a good meal before we get into break. So then when we review our participation, you know, where we were at for breakfast, twenty-two, twenty-three, up to twenty-four, twenty-five. We've been growing steady there. Lunch has been growing, so it's a positive thing, and more kids are eating with us. Supply chain and equipment issues, I, I say as of this moment right now, we do not have a supply chain issue. But to let you know that we were informed through M D E, last year, they served over a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty million meals, which created a forty percent breakfast increase and a fifteen percent lunch increase. There is currently twenty states that have bills into their legislation looking at passing this. Industry is informing us of them, twenty-two, Texas and Florida are going to be big game changers. If they go to free meals and they see that increase, we will see a supply shortage coming in next year, just because the amount of kids that are going to come on into that program. So that has me thinking about what if, what can we do now to start being proactive in, in working through all this for next year, and what does that mean? And there's just going to be a lot of thought going into how we can try and smooth our, our bumps and hiccups as much as we can. We, we don't know what that's going to look like until it comes. Right now, our biggest challenge is equipment repairs. If something breaks, it's taking anywhere from two to four weeks to get over or general parts out. I had a conversation with Hobart, and they're down to three technicians, so I, I don't, I don't know. Again, what can we do to be proactive? Maybe look at, in August, we should have them come in and service and maintain the machines and see if we can try and get ahead of it. Again, them are things that we just are looking at. We did have an oven, a computer thing. We did a dance every morning and rode it and just thanked it for working, and it kept going, but it did take three weeks to get them all to fix it, but it's going. So that's what we're seeing there. Just looking at how to be more proactive versus reactive. We have completed our final leg into the processes of Glendon. Everything is pretty much going, and we have bread and milk going into Dilworth. But we ship every day from here, hopefully, a lot of that hot stuff that could be potential hazardous gets made here, and then we ship over. But then every heat and certain things are sent over there frozen, like pizza and corn dogs and things like that, and they'd be bad on the side. So doing things like that has really kind of made us appealing with our vendors, because now we're reducing drops. Chase put a wonderful training together and got some people certified to use the forkless, so we can take pallet drops and things of that sort. We're just really trying to make it as easy as we can for our vendors, and in that process, we are managing our inventory better. We're reducing the space that we're taking. We've got four freezers and we only operate two. We utilize the other two as storage. But if something goes down, we can shift over and fire them back up, so, yeah. And then it saves us the labor part of it too, having two kitchens trying to manage inventory and just, just that whole process. Staffing updates, currently, we are fully staffed, and I am just, I'm just really happy to report when we had a dishwasher position, I have the applicants that, that applied. So people are really, really excited about the farm to school process, so that's, that's always nice. We, at Glendon, also had two student workers from the special ed department coming in two days a week, so we're learning new skills and what the workforce looks like, so we're working on that. And I hate to end with USDA's regulations, but I included in here, USDA now has passed more regulations on sugars and sodium. The sodium is, we're not going to have a very, very much effect on that. Our sodium is really good with our farm to school. We're really reducing a lot of that sodium out of there, so that, that we don't have to worry about. We will see some impact on the added sugars. There's some cereals that won't qualify unless industry is able to make that change before next year. There is some yogurts that we got tweaked, but what we're doing this year is we're kind of changing how we pair things together and offering more choices to see if we can kind of get the kids kind of divert away, divert away from Lucky Charms and try and work this out, you know? And so we're, we're trying to get to be proactive and work on them things this year and starting to introduce them in. So next year, when these things do happen, it's not as much of a, everybody's upset because Lucky Charms, we have to avoid. So, any questions for me?
Just kudos to you. It's just unbelievable when you first started your, your reports. I'm blown away every time I see you. So thank you for what you're doing for these kids and introducing new fruits and vegetables to kids and experiences, so I think this... I want to come to school. Can I eat more and come eat these days? It's like pretty fun, so.
Well, I ate lunch at the school every day. When I'm here at lunch, I eat at the school every day. It's, and on Thursdays, it's egg salad day, homemade egg salad, Amish bread, it's not a bad deal.
I just want to say thank you. I received an email from a parent who was concerned about some things happening in the school, and it was way above my knowledge base when it came to food dies and things, and so I looped her in and said, I'm not sure if you received this, but I don't know what to do. So could you help me? And Shannon had such a thoughtful, long response back to this parent, and then the parent was like, well, thank you for that, and I appreciate all of that. But I was actually more concerned about the classroom, and so then she looped myself back in with the principals and was able to really just have a very thoughtful conversation over email that I think the parent really was receptive on, and I was very grateful because, like I said, it was way over my head, and I thought, I need more help. So, and you just did terrific. I just want everybody here to know that that was, that was really appreciated.
Any other questions for Sean?
Thank you, Shannon.
Very welcome.
All right, on to six point three, budget committee report. So we met after the last school board meeting. Relative and short, we did have Marcus with us as well, the business manager, looked at enrollment. Enrollment is at fifteen hundred and thirty-nine students. So that is pretty close to where we budgeted, a little bit.
It's close to where we budgeted. It's down from last year's enrollment, it's like our kindergarten, maybe you're going to say that.
Yeah, kindergarten numbers are down.
Yep.
So we talked about the audit with Mike Bailey, and that has been ongoing. It looks probably like that will be done in November at this point in time. We'll find out what the audit says, of course, but things look to be going pretty good. So more to come on that, and we talked a little bit about board authority to internally transfer restricted funds. Shannon's been talking about the last couple of board meetings, and he's going to actually bring that up again, so I wouldn't steal any thunder there. So that's all for the budget. Any questions? Or anything added?
Anyone want to share that powerpoint?
So thank you for saying that, and we had the other meeting before the meeting, so if you could put it up on the computer, yeah, so I should probably go do that. Yeah, yeah, so while you guys.
Yes, we'll just, we'll go on to the, any other questions on the budget? All right, so we'll go on to personnel committee. So personnel committee met just before the board meeting here tonight. We talked a little bit about succession planning and transportation, and athletic director looking probably to post a position for that sometime in December possibly. We also reviewed, Shannon's been looking at and reviewing some of the duties and workload for the secretarial administration staff, and just going through that. It's been a really busy time for them, and just appreciate all the work that they've done here for the school, and all we do, as you can imagine, that group of individuals are inundated with pretty much everything that comes through the school. They kind of touch on everything, so. And then the last thing, we talked a little bit about Brian Tax funeral plans. I think a group of folks are looking at going down November eleventh for the prayer service, and then, and then there's the funeral on November twelfth, so. Just so everyone is aware of that, the next personnel meeting. The next personnel meeting is going to be until January 8th. And I should have said the next budget meeting will be December 16th. Any questions on personnel?
I won't be here when you retire, but thank you for everything you've done. I mean, you do an awesome job. So. You're not replaceable. We might have to make you stay. Maybe you know someone that would be here. No pressure, no pressure. We're just saying in personnel, we're like, she can retire. She's not able to. So you've done a great job. So.
That's evidenced by her reports now, which is very thankful for. Everything she did for the business.
So how many things has Shannon turned up? The recordings up, Brooke's face over there.
No, it shouldn't be. I'm trying to do it outside. So I apologize. The meeting before this meeting kind of, whoop. And then I didn't have it up and no, it's not. You guys later name it.
We did mention that we have negotiations coming up next year. Just Lindsay is not going to be joining us for that. First negotiation of the years.
So I guess.
I'll bring licorice. I'll drop it off early.
Negotiations, which are almost a lot of fun. You do eat a little bit of licorice.
Usually a bag of night.
What's that?
Combined total bag of night, people. We didn't eat cheap.
Yeah, I did. No, I probably didn't. Trying to think anything else. Negotiations. Just so everyone knows, I think we'll start with negotiations for certified staff probably. We talked about trying to do it a little, get things going a little bit earlier than we have in the past. So that is one thing we need to talk about.
So I'm back. I didn't want to stop the recording and I'm going to have to kick out in order to do it. So what I will do is I'll present it next month or yeah, in two weeks. Yeah, because I'm going to have to kick out of this. As soon as I kick out, it's going to stop the recording. I just thought, okay. The budget committee saw it and I think, and I'll share with the full board, which is a meeting to do. And I apologize for that. A lot of order today and yeah, but I can't share. Yeah. So we'll just add it to next, to the 12th, November 12th. One thing I will say, I'm sorry, is it my report time?
Any other questions on committees? I don't think we had any other questions for a little time. All right, on 6.4, we'll super that report.
All right, perfect. Thanks. MSBA conference, just, I know some of you are writing off into the sunset. But and we'll have new members at some point and we'll have to figure that out. But our trip down to the cities, we'll kind of put that on hold, but just, I don't have the dates. Do you have the dates? January? And also we might need to book some hotels and then if we have to cancel, we can, just depending on, we don't know if we can go on that. So something to think about. Let's make sure we have that for next meeting. We'll have dates.
It's always the, it's always the second, second Thursday and Friday on nine and 10.
Just to plug, it's a great opportunity to learn what it is to be a school board member and all these different things that we encounter in school.
Well, and not only that, I think the other major piece of it is we know for sure we're going to have two new board members. Okay. And so to go through the phase one, phase two, you can do it at the conference in person. And I know some of you guys had to do it like I think online.
2020 was Zoom.
It was, yeah. So it was a different deal, right?
It was getting rough.
But when we go down to the conference, so the new board members can do it in person and the phase one, phase two stuff, it'll be kind of nice. And it'll be super helpful. And as a superintendent, I've, I've joined those people in my previous district. It would be nice for me to sit with them too. So as we go through that training, yeah, it's super informative, right? So, so that'll be important. So we'll get more details on that. The second thing on your budget update, so there's a few things going on. I talked to Heidi Bailey today for our audit. They are hopeful for the 12th, but realistically thinking the report will be on the 25th of November. So our second November meeting, he's still holding out hope that everything gets reviewed and all the statements, financial statements get rubber stamped by the 12th. He just couldn't guarantee it today. So he's going to tell me next week, yes or no. And so just a heads up, I want to make sure you're aware that the audit report might go kick back till the 25th. So the other thing I wanted to talk about real quick is if you look at our, our monthly budget or bi-monthly, we show you our percentages. And so I just want you to look at that. If you look, obviously we're in the middle. October is not done yet, so we haven't closed it up. You can see we have 5% leeway. You can look at this year, this is something that I do constantly, is how are we doing in relation to last year? We have spent 3% less. Obviously, our budget number is higher, but we've also spent $400,000 less than last year. There's different reasons why and it always kind of seems to kind of come up. But just want you to kind of, this is a constant benchmark for me to constantly be looking. And so you guys are always informed of where are you at, where are we at, where's the budget, where's the money going? This is that transparent conversation. Just so you know, obviously we have a $20 million budget. So what 1% is $200,000. So if you look at 5%, that's, that's a good thing. To get out the month still, right, to close out the month of October, which end of the month kind of really, you know, it's a little bit bigger, but we got a little leeway there. So just wanted to show you that sometimes I think as board members in my previous district, they go, oh yeah, it's there. And I think it's important for me that you take a look at it because then it's no surprises, right? Well, where and oh yeah, I forgot to look at that. Well, every two weeks you get to see it. So if there's ever a question on that, Ronnie's not with us anymore. He always had 100 questions, which was fantastic because it made me pause. It made me think. So I appreciate that about Ronnie. But this is a simple document, I think, to take a snapshot, look at it and say, how are we doing? We're doing okay. How do we do compared to last year? Oh, we're doing okay. And so I think those things are important. So I wanted to share that today. And the presentation, you can get it up in here. So I will share that next on the 12th. Okay?
I don't know. I don't know B and C. MRA conference and TNT 4B.
Yep, I can get that. So I have the earlier version. MRA conference, I am at that in November. I think that's the 7th. 7th, I think, in November. Anyway, so I'll be, no, it's the week after that. It's the 18th, I think it is, in November. So I will be at that conference again. It invites some principals. It just didn't work with their schedules. So I will be flying solo, which is okay. A very good conference. Been really happy with that. Always getting information to bring back. Oh, December 16th, yes, our truth and taxation meeting. We have to adjust that. Okay, because, well, we have a concert again. So we have another concert. So one of the things we talked about is moving it down to the high school conference room for the truth and taxation. Truth and taxation, normally we don't have a ton of pub, no, I'm sorry, we're not going to the conference room. We're going to go to the media center because we were going to be in the conference room. But then if you had public that wanted to attend, we wouldn't have space in that conference room. So we are going to go to the media center. So that way we don't have to move it. If a bunch of public show up, we can be there. And the time is five o'clock. We had to move it up.
School board meeting is at five. The TNT meeting.
Has to be at six because it has to be at six or later.
And what time is the concert?
At six. I thought the concert was at. I think it is at six. So what we're going to do with the truth and taxation, because we have to have it at six or later. We're going to do our truth and taxation presentation. I'll have that presentation. I'll actually have it this time. But we'll start it right at six because the concert does start at six, but it goes for a long time. I'm hoping that we can just go through that presentation within 10 minutes. And hopefully people that, if you can't attend because you have to get to the concert because you have a student or a son or daughter in that, you don't have to be here. We just need to call them and you can always talk to me later if you have a question. Yeah, we went around and around. We do that.
I don't, is that middle school concert or? Oh, it's middle school. Oh, okay. And we, I was going to say, if it was high school, I'm like, we're not going to have a concert. What is the Christmas concert? The Christmas concert. Okay. Yeah, I was just thinking because if it's high school, I'm like, that's going to be in it.
So the other part, as you guys know, unless we have a large group of public that wants more information, we can share that. That's awesome. But it doesn't have to take that long either. So hopefully if you have somebody that can save a seat for you, if you want to stay for a little bit of it, just to see the presentation quick and then hold out. I guess it's up to you guys, but I just wanted to make sure we have a forum.
Just let me know if you guys want to have a meeting. Anybody's got?
Why don't you send an email out so we remind and we can all just respond.
Yeah, no worries. We'll get it figured out.
And so I apologize. My day is a little bit different today. I had meetings in Holly and it was in Glendon in the afternoon. So my right hand was in Dilworth and I was over here. So yeah, so I have my old agenda that I'm on my notes on.
Any questions for Shannon?
Here we are.
All right, hearing now to number 7.1. This is motion to approve the regular meeting on October 14th, 2024. So I have a motion. Motion by Laura, it was a second. Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to consent agenda, 8.1, to approve claims for October 2024 of the amount of. Treasurer's monthly budget report. Shannon just talked about that. That is in your deck of materials. And then we will, we'll approve the fundraisers. Got that. We're going to do a resolution donation. Oh, the fundraisers. I'm sorry, the fundraisers are in your packets. Your fundraisers were good. As presented. So do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Motion, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any questions or discussions on the consent?
Are these, maybe the boxes just aren't checked. Have these been approved before they got?
I talked to Katie today briefly about them and she said to her knowledge, everything was good. Did she not check her boxes or? I think, I'm sorry, I need to find it in my back. Yeah, when I talked to Katie today, she said they were, from her end, they were good. She said, I don't know if I went in and checked them and I see that they're not. But she did. She, when I, I did talk to her this afternoon when I got back from the meeting. So I was concerned that we have, so we had new teachers that are running programs. And so when I talked to her this afternoon, I said, does our new people know that this is the process? And she said, well, I've shared it with them. And then I looked through it. We have a couple of new people on here that did have requests. So our eight teachers got something on there for FFA and I remember watching, I think it was in here too, if I remember right.
And how often are we doing the fundraiser approval? I thought that they were just twice during the year. Like I thought it was like during the summer, like leading up to the fall.
We do it in the fall and then we were doing it in the winter. So this is.
This is the second time. So we'll do it in the end of the year.
Yeah, we usually do it in the second semester after the new year.
I just see like volleyball's on here. I thought theirs were supposed to be done before fall sports.
But didn't we approve that originally?
I feel like that one, I feel like this one's.
So these just are like a continuation?
So there was a first page that were all approved and then printed because they were approved every year. And this is the second page.
So that's where I was wondering like volleyball, why are we approving?
Yeah, we should have had that done before.
I feel like this volleyball one was on there. I feel like it's all just moved down. And like you're saying, you just printed, this is two sheets right from, like I feel like we did do the August. I probably have it at.
I think I have. That's what I thought. I was, when I looked at today, I'm visiting with Katie, I had both sheets. I had somewhere. Oh, maybe here. Here they are. These are checked out. Okay, here's the sheet I have. So there was a, these were approved. These were the football and volleyball. Well, I thought we had elementary. All these were approved. I have them approved in the summer and now this is the new ones.
I think the only one here that potentially, oh, that's just a continuation of the previous one that was already approved. The one you were looking at. Volleyball tournament.
Top in the third, volleyball as well.
Hosted tournament fair.
I'm looking at one for.
No, 8/13/24, she, she timestamped it volleyball, a dollar serve between. Okay, that's the serving. They do during the event, but this says 8/13, so I don't know the board. Yeah.
Well, we probably, we probably approved those first fundraisers.
By yours.
But I'm, I'm just like if we have been doing some of these fundraisers in between when they were approved by admin, but not by the board, we're not following our own standards. So I just think we should shore that up and be consistent. Like if the fall sports have to have their fundraisers in by August 15th or whatever, then they should be responsible for having them in by August 15th. And then they shouldn't be approved following that. If that's what we've agreed upon, whatever date that is, I think that we need to be more consistent because otherwise we just leave a lot of wiggle room and inconsistencies for that.
This is a great reminder that I need to then get this on my agenda on the calendar. So this is followed up with.
Because it's part of a policy.
Yeah, I was trying to remember what the account.
Three, we just have, will be approved in August, October and January. We don't say volleyball needs to have theirs by August.
But I mean, if they've been, if they've been doing the dollar serve between games all fall and we haven't approved that, that's, they shouldn't be doing.
After the fact or before the fact, before the approval.
Correct. Yeah, they should be approved first.
I think we can, even if we haven't approved this, I think we can approve it again.
Well, and we haven't for some, you know.
Yeah.
The other question I have is under, Jason Sunday has one for the girls basketball hoops club. That's not a DGF sponsored activity, correct? Like that's, that's the outside basketball one?
It is. It's just, we wanted to make sure these are here so you guys know what's going on.
Yep. So it just like special services needed or required is gym usage. We have a policy requiring like rental or whatever. So is he then, is he requesting a variance to that in getting gym usage covered for free or is he?
Nope, it's under, he has followed that policy. So he has talked with Tracy about that policy. So he knows exactly his new responsibilities. Yep. And I believe Katie maybe has talked into it, but I know Tracy has asked.
I assume that was all shored up.
Yep. No. Yeah, that's one of the things we should talk about is when we do the fundraisers to that point of our three times a year, we should talk about making sure that if it's something that's going to happen during all season, then it's turned in so we can approve it in August.
Yeah, I just think it needs to be happening. And I think logically, if you're going to know that they're due in August, if you're going to do something in August, September or early October prior to being approved again, it should be done prior to that.
Yep. Because remember the idea there was that the August ones were for fall things. October was for winter things. Jan, January was for spring. That was the concept and we need to.
Well, it was, I think, yeah, it was discussed that they would have to be done, be approved prior to completing the fundraiser. So.
Any other questions on the consent? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Both. Motion carries. Onto 9.1, community education annual report. This is a motion to approve the community education annual report in your territory to have. Do I have a motion? Motion by Lindsay. Do I have a, sorry. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Lindsay. Any questions or discussions? I just thank Tracy for putting this together. Yes, it's my thing. Questions or discussions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to 9.2, this is to approve the indoor air quality management plan as presented. Do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole. Do I have a second? Any questions or discussion?
This is just, yeah, this is just something that Chase brought to me that we got from Jason or he comes and checks all of our systems and whatnot from the country service cooperative. And this is something we're supposed to approve every year. I don't think it's. I don't think it's happening every year. And so we don't, so we better do it. So again, we are now doing, and that's good. And so I, I don't see it in my packet, Brooke. Is that something that was shared? Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure. So as you see it, I'm going, uh, no, okay. Did I mention I was at a different meeting today?
No worries. Any questions or discussions on indoor air quality management? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. On to nine point three, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Mary Moen Lunchroom Supervisor Class Two Step One, effective October 21st, 2024. Do I have a motion? Motion by Amy. Do I have a second? Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. On to nine point four, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Leann Parkman, Lunchroom Supervisor Class Two Step One, effective October 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Motion by Lindsay. Do I have a second? Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. On to nine point five, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Bar Sports, Recess Supervisor Class Two Step One, effective October 21st, 2024. Do I have a motion? Motion by Brittany. Do I have a second? Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion?
I do want to say, so if you recognize these people, they're going to come and help us with recess and lunchroom duty only, so kind of a shortened contract to help with our paraprofessional shortfalls. So those other pairs can be back in programming and helping with students. So we really appreciate these ladies stepping up and taking a short, middle of their day, popping in and helping out for recess and lunch, which has really helped take some pressure off other pairs. So just kudos to all three of them for stepping up and helping. I've been down at lunchrooms, they're doing a great job, so.
With the new recess supervisor, would that give the students in Dillworth a chance to use the green space across the street?
Possibly. Our attendance is still challenging us in that. So we're working towards that slowly. Great question, because that's what I really like to see.
Because it's unused currently.
It's not used very often. If ever, our, our early child, our preschool is using it all the time, but that's just a small part of the time.
And teachers like sign up to use it then, like, during the day?
They, they could, yeah. We're trying to get the recess over there, right? And it's just a supervision situation right now. Across the road, it's, you know, it's not connected, so it's not perfect. It would be wonderful, it's just a, hate to say it's kind of a numbers thing right now. We have to make sure we have somebody there. And so, yeah, we're working towards that still. So thank you for asking, Laura, it's part of what our hope is. Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. On to nine point six, this is the donation resolution. Approve the donation. Yeah, why don't you?
Whereas Minnesota Statutes 123B02 subdivision six provides, the board may receive for the benefit of the district requests donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district or for the benefit of peoples thereof, including trusts created to provide people's or the district's advance education after completion of high school and the advancement of education. And whereas Minnesota Statutes 46503 provides, any city, county, school, district, or town may accept a grant or device of real or personal property and maintain such property for the benefit of its citizens in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor. Nothing herein shall authorize such acceptance or use for religious or sectarian purposes. Every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by a matured member expressing such terms in code. Whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by a matured member expressing such terms in code. Therefore, be it the result of the school board of Dillworth-Lincoln Public Schools ISD 2164, rightfully accepts following donations from Rand McCleod of Atiler for the Building and Grounds Department, from Kyle and Cindy Thormudson, Thormudson, in the amount of one thousand for the high school club, and from Jars and Junk in the amount of a hundred dollars for DGF robotics.
Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Do I have a second? Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? Just thank these folks for just fantastic donations. It's really appreciated. Very helpful to the school and to the kids. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor. We're going to do it by roll call, that's what I really didn't say. So we'll start with Brittany. Nicole?
Aye.
Laura? David, aye. Amy? Micah? Resolution passes. All right, ten point one, the next school board meeting is Tuesday, November 12th, 2004 at 6:00 PM here in the DGF community room with Psych. And the facility, on to ten point two, is the Facilities Transportation Committee meeting will be following the school board meeting on November 12th, 2004 here in the DGF community room. Break this on to Lavin. This is to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion by Lindsay. Second by Laura. Laura, any means. Motion by Amy, second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
I sat down right for it. Everyone doesn't know if they're.
So I was ready, I was ready, I was ready to click it open. It's going to kick.